In council meeting to work, would you please grant me a break for advice? And please register to the floor that we have a state's and to the floor for which stands one nation, other than individual delivery of justice. Certainly, please take your
Yes, good evening, everyone. Mayor Oberlander.
Here.
Mayor Pretend.
Here. Here.
Mr. Isaacson, here. Mr. Schaefer, here. Mr. Mercer, here. Mr. Supple, here. Ms. Napplin.
Here.
And Mr. Love.
And we didn't get, you know, Mr. Levitt, he got tied up with family business. So would council like to excuse his absence this evening?
Yes.
Any objections? Okay. So I'll note that council member Levitt has an excuse absence. Under additions and corrections to the agenda, on consent, the concession policy number five did not have the agenda bill list number listed. And that is agenda bill twenty-three dash thirty-two. So let the record be like that. And does council have any other additions or corrections to the agenda? Council member Isaacson?
Assistant to the council, the word from the bottom there, concession part, it's and I don't want to do that. Agree with the consent agenda.
We
I want to bring up a question about this. That's right.
Yeah, we can pull it and put it on unfinished business.
Well, I don't want to do that. It's kind of really a dramatic question.
I have a question as well on our thing.
So we can pull it. Let's just pull it and put it under unfinished business. And that will lead to third. So agenda bill twenty-three dash thirty-two has been pulled from the consent agenda. Any other additions or corrections?
Mayor, I have one.
Go ahead, Mayor Pretend.
At the last council meeting, I forgot to add this to our consent agenda, but just wanted to move to excuse the absences of council member Napplin, Levitt, and who was the other one? Oh, Schaefer. We forgot to do that. So I just wanted to go ahead and add that to this one as well.
Is it getting any better, council member?
I can hear you guys again.
We had everyone turn off their Wi-Fi, so we should hopefully be good. Please let me know if that happens again.
Okay.
Next, we have comments from the audience. Do we have anybody in the audience tonight that would like to hear about a phone comment? Seeing none, did we receive any bike email?
We did not, Mayor.
And is there anyone online that wishes to speak this evening? No, that's
No response.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and move to executive session. Under RCW forty-two dot three zero dot one one zero seven one seven I, we'll go into discussion on counsel about current or potential litigation. And how many minutes do you want us to read?
Ten to fifteen.
All right, let's start with ten and then clerk will notify the public when we return from executive session.
All right, if you give me one second, I'm gonna try to put people on.
Make sure there's nobody in our increase for about Yeah, we sent up and go downstairs and had a warrant on Halloween, so then it was just
We could do some of those downstairs.
Yeah.
Well, except Amy, we could pull Amy on the phone.
If we want to pull Amy on the phone, we can do that and go downstairs.
Why don't we do that just so that we don't and I want to hear this.
Amy, we'll call you on your city cell phones. So that the clerk can work out the glitches here.
Sounds good.
I I'm listening in. So should I just log out? Is I guess there's sound.
You can stay logged in. We're just going to mute. You can stay logged in.
Okay.
Downstairs. She's going downstairs.
Oh, 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 I
Thank you.
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 We continue to have an executive session and council will return on or about seven twenty-five.
And city council is returning from executive session at seven twenty-six P M. We'll move on to the rest of our regular agenda. And first up is approval of this evening's consent agenda. We have a motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Actually, we didn't get a verbal from everyone. So we do have to have a verbal vote. Do we? So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on, it's yet in your packets, you have several written reports in the planning calendar that's normally reviewed at committee of the whole. And now we'll move on to our public hearings. First up is an ordinance on mobile community units, agenda bill twenty-three dash twenty-nine. And Troy Davis, our senior planner, will be presenting, and I will go ahead and open the public hearing. And at the conclusion of the presentation, anyone from the public is willing is has the opportunity for private public comments, and then they will close the public hearing. And council will have the opportunity to vote on it under unfinished business. So with that, Mr. Davis, please take it away.
Troy, can you try and unmute yourself from your computer? Not fair, anything.
I can hear you guys. Some people are harder to understand than others, but I can mostly hear everything.
Troy, can you hear us?
Yes, sorry. There we go. Okay, my apologies. Let me get my video started. I can't start my video. Is that okay? Or do you need my video on?
Please do start your video.
Can I? It says I need the host. I can't start my video because the host has stopped it.
If they have to unplug the audio, see how this is locked over right there?
Over there.
Can you try it again, Troy?
Okay.
Turn it on. There we go.
All right, should I share my screen or?
Yeah, let's go ahead. We're having some difficulty.
Okay. No problem. So good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight's public hearing is on the mobile food units. As you'll recall, well, over a month ago, we adopted a As you'll recall, well over a month ago, we adopted a ordinance, temporary interim ordinance, to allow for mobile food units within the city for a period of at least six months. And under the RCWs were required to hold a public hearing to gather public input. Within sixty days of passing that ordinance, we're a few days ahead of schedule, so we're within the sixty day window. So here we are at the kind of the end of the road on our order status for this interim ordinance. And we've gone through all these steps here and now we are at the public hearing. So just to kind of rehash for the public that may be present and that would like to participate, I'll kind of talk a little bit about the ordinance. Interest in the mobile food units came from the local business community. Initial interest kind of picked up a number of years ago and that's when we began our draft of the ordinance and both an on and off period of drafting and getting caught on other priorities. We finally made it to a draft that was was workable for for the city. Another reason for the mobile food unit ordinance is it does support economic development, which is promoted in our comprehensive plan. So this moves to further some of our economic policies and goals. It does add a liveliness to the city's commercial corridor. We know as the weather improves and we have other special events throughout the city and activities. Just kind of our main street comes alive, you know, and so allowing mobile food units within our commercial corridor kind of helps add to that liveliness here in town. And primarily, the number one function of this interim ordinance is to essentially allow mobile food units to operate outside of the special events. So up until now, mobile food units had to operate during Duval days and other events, but now they're free to to operate outside of those special events. So looking for guidance and how we came up with the draft for this ordinance, we of course looked at our National American Planning Association guidance. We looked at existing municipal codes across the country. We have, of course, our internal expertise with the team, you know, from planning, public works, building and fire all came together with our various knowledge. And we also received input from planning commission and city council to get to the draft or to get to the ordinance that we have in place now. So the ordinance addresses a number of topics. It addresses essentially what you know, it takes to to get mobile food unit operating within the city. It regulates sort of all of the the setup and function of the mobile food unit as well as signage and utilities and that sort of thing. And so we can get those operations properly regulated so that we don't end up with conflicting issues within the city. So. What does this ordinance do? It allows for mobile food units within our commercial areas. It prohibits mobile food units from becoming semi-permanent fixtures within the city. That was kind of a kind of a big issue is not wanting it to look like temporary is permanent. It does place limits on some potential nuisances. It does limit the conglomeration of mobile food units. It also prohibits the sale of goods outside the units that we don't get a proliferation of tables and other displays outside the mobile food unit that carry items for sale. The ordinance will last, but it will terminate within six months unless a six-month extension is granted or the city decides to adopt a a permanent ordinance. And the good news is is our application is live, so we now have the opportunity for anyone to apply online and good to go. And I will turn the floor back to the mayor.
So thank you, Mr. Davis. Now would be the time for public comment for anyone from the public that would like to provide comments. So if we don't have anyone in the audience, if there's an individual that's online who would like to speak, please raise your hand and we'll promote you to a panelist and you'll have three minutes to speak. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And move on to our second public hearing of the evening, a cable franchise agreement, Agenda Bill twenty three dash thirty one. Go ahead and open that up. Same as by hardest one, we'll do the presentation. We'll have provide have an opportunity to provide comments. We'll close the hearing and then move on to the next scheduled items. With that, city administrators, you have it down.
Um, yes, I don't have a presentation or PowerPoint slide. Everything is in last, the May fifth or May second, council packet and the council packet for today, but under R C W thirty five A dot forty seven dot O four O as well as the chapter five of forty seven United States Code. The city is permitted to have cable franchise agreements. The R C W requires a two touches to council and Duval Municipal Code requires a public hearing prior to the acceptance of a cable franchise agreement. We have the opportunity to bring this to first touch to council on the beginning of May, our first council meeting in May, and this is the second opportunity for council to consider the Comcast cable franchise agreement. The city and Comcast engaged in negotiations in February and March to come up with the cable franchise agreement that you see in your packet. As of today, the agreement with Comcast includes a requirement for Comcast to pay five percent of the gross revenues of cable services to the city as a franchise fee. It generally has terms that comply with the right of way requirements and permitting restoration. And then we negotiated indemnification and insurance provisions that are very similar to the municipalities near us. For the most part, the agreement reflects recent Comcast agreements that have been approved to our neighbors to the south and to the west of us. So at that point, at this point, I would open the public hearing for the Comcast cable franchise agreement.
And we do have one member of the audience from the organization, but I want to check first if anyone online would like to provide public comment at this time. Seeing none, we do have our original Comcast here, who I believe is welcome to provide public comments. That's Mr. Davis. Yes.
Here it is. I'm the senior director for Governor Ferris with Comcast. I just want to say on behalf of Comcast, we are, we support the franchise that's before you. We look forward to bringing our suite of services to evolve and being another option and competing with the other service providers in this in the city. This proposal would bring our hybrid fiber coax network to the city. It is under the cable franchise that authorizes use of the rights of way and, you know, under the Cable Act. And then we would be able to deploy all of our advanced services on top of of that. So with that, I would be open to, or that's really basically what I want to say. And during the presentation on the debate, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, and thank you for being here. And that concludes those in the public that are either online or in person. Clerk, did we receive any written comment?
We did not, Mayor.
Great, thank you. And with that, the public. Close. Move on to schedule and mayor's report. I was out the last week, so not at. Oh, yes.
With respect to the advanced services?
Oh, we can answer that during our agenda bill. So public hearing is just for public hearing and comment and then we got the agenda bill. Yeah, you got it. Thank you. We'll make sure we get your question answered. So mayor's report, I was out for the last week, so not a lot to report, although the Sound Cities Association board, we do have our meeting tomorrow. We had E D C wrap up call on some of the legislative work. As folks know, the legislature met today to cure the Lake decision. I have not yet seen the finalists. I was working all day, but I expect from what I heard from legislators that that deal had been reached. So I expect that day to go through or else they would not have called everyone down to Olympia for one day. And yeah, that reminder that the E D C Association Washington Cities Conference is fast approaching in Spokane this year, so would love to see some more faces there. The State Public Affairs Association quarterly meeting is coming up next week, I believe, and Sound Cities Association networking dinner is May thirty first, and that will be a legislative wrap up. So hope to see folks there. And then, of course, we have Duval is coming up first weekend in June, so looking forward to seeing all of council and community down there as well. Thank you. And we'll move on to the city administrator's report. Great. And we'll have.
So we can catch up to the PowerPoint, but I'll just say it's a very short city administrator update today. We are very busy onboarding new staff. Really excited about the community events coordinator and communications coordinator positions that started yesterday. They'll come to the the June sixth meeting. Already, our community events coordinator today had a meeting with Cass Goldman to begin training and mentoring on summer stage. And she's already started on selecting food trucks, so she jumped right in. She met with Duval Days, that planning group, this afternoon and has another meeting with them tomorrow. So we had Sandy Duval in at the visitor center this morning. So yes, I just wanted I could like rotate that screen just a tad. I'm seeing it just from the side and it's hard to read.
I'm trying to put it over here.
Oh, because I mean, if not, it's just to just to tease you that I'd be okay. If you can't, it's okay. I just, it's hard to read. Yeah, I just got started while our clerk was working with some of the technology.
Oh, oh, so you're planning on.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't mean. I just was like half. I can't really read that if that's where I'm trying to see it. Yeah, no. So I, no, I just started talking with Dr. Powerpoint. It's a pretty short update today. And so I'll just kind of work through it and we'll have the slides catch up to us once it's put on the main screen. So for council, community and committee commission updates, just a reminder that July fourth is a scheduled council meeting, kind of by consent of the group. Last time we discussed this on in the first week of May, we decided unless we had city business that really required a meeting that first week of July, that we would go ahead and cancel the July fourth meeting. The policy in the past has been if a meeting falls on a holiday, we move it to the next business day, let's say July fifth. All right, we're on to the next slide. There we go. I tried to make it bigger council room or stuff, but even then it's still. So right now, spoke to Director Lashewski and Director Thomas, who would be the departments most likely to have business that would require two meetings in July. Right now, we think we can probably hold on business for that first week of July. It means a second meeting in July might have quite a bit of quite a few items on it, but for now, we're planning to not schedule a meeting for July fifth. Similarly, August first, we discuss potentially having a recess meeting for August first that also falls on August first is a regularly scheduled council meeting night. It's also national night out. So in the past, a lot of council members wanted to participate in national night out, so our plan right now is also cancel that August first meeting to allow for participation in that event. And next week, we have the joint planning commission city council meeting at seven P M here in the visitor center focusing on housing and I believe Director Thomas, the housing action. They'll be here. On the twenty fourth. June fifth is the finance director interviews. So any council members who are interested, please reply back to an email that you received from Heather Jack. She's heard from a couple of council members. But if you would like to participate, it'll probably be all day on June fifth. And we can hopefully arrange for it to be by Zoom if you would like to participate that way and I can work with Wendy Brown, our recruiter, to to try to facilitate lots of different ways of participating in those interviews. And thank you to the council members who have already offered to participate. That'll be a busy day. It'll be a staff panel, council member panel. Mayor panel as well, so hoping to bring two or three finalists that day for. And then the first week of June, we have Duval Days, Reverend and the Duval Cardroom. Next slide. Our community development update. So we have an updated community development current document that you see here, but it's awesome council packet for your review. And we have next slide. The International Wildland Urban Interface Code. Just a reminder, we're doing that work on the WUWE right now, council saw presentation last week in Cal on some of those building code updates. The city is partnering with other communities to create informational epic views for building code updates. And this will help all of us to spend it together, have a consistent implementation and and offer interpretations of the new rules that are consistent with each other, so we don't have one city offering an interpretation that. So we are working together in our community to come up with informational epic views and more will come from that. Next slide. I'm not sure if anybody saw, we had quite a bit of social media conversation around lemonade stands over the weekend. We are going to have community messaging this week. Luckily, they have a communications director who's going to help us with that. But under the R C W, lemonade stands are exempt from permitting for anybody under the age of eighteen, which also includes sale of soda. So lemonade stands are okay and do not require city permit. So in case anybody saw, it was very active this last weekend. With the nice weather, we have a lot of inspections and permit reviews. Those are increasing. Director Thomas and her team are out. I think today Director Thomas, you did forty five inspections today alone.
Thirty two.
Thirty two. So we're doing a lot of work in that area and then the housing work is continuing progress again, meeting next week. Next slide. So from public works, we have quite a few projects either out to bid or out to solicitation or bid. We have the overlay project. It's out to bid. The opening is on the thirty first. The engineer estimate on that is six hundred and fifty to seven hundred K. The wastewater treatment plant office, the remodel rebid, that's going out next Friday. The architects estimate right now is two point six million. We're soliciting, we're under advertisement for the sewer implosion and infiltration planning and design. And the public work project page is up to date on all the items listed, so the community can go look at all of our active projects. We also have the wastewater treatment plant fourth train capacity upgrade at ninety percent design on headwork spring progressing. And that is a lot of words together that without Director Lashewski, I'm not sure that I can answer questions. And so if you have questions, I can certainly put them to him and return with an answer. The hundred and forty second place sidewalk project is complete, as is the police station remodel. And they're just waiting for final inspection of that. And then our crew is busy prepping for Duval Days crack ceiling. I was out actually actually watching. I was out actually, actually watching crack ceiling last week. And they have it pretty much down to a science, our crew, they do a really nice job. And then we're still recruiting for a sewer maintenance one, and that's been re-advertised. And then the final slide, just a reminder, please give me your laptops soon so we can get them upgraded. It's a request from our IT consultant.
Councilmember, sir?
This is, this is a question around the presentation, but I know several months ago, there was a request from council to upload these presentations to the document center. And I know that hasn't been happening, so we get it here, but then we don't have any record of it. I just wanted to sort of remind you whether to put it as part of the council packet or you created a folder for city administrator and you just upload the reports. Because there's a lot of really valuable information, I think that would be helpful to have just in terms of permit counts and other things just in one place. So just wanted to sort of reinforce that request.
Okay, for, for chair?
Thank you. There's a specific folder on the document center called meeting presentations. And each one has a meeting date and all the meeting presentations that we see here go in that folder.
Okay, so I was looking, I didn't see it. So that makes, makes sense. I was looking for either city administrator or in the, in the council package folder. So appreciate the guidance.
And if you want, I'd be more than happy to send the link.
Councilmember, Nathan? Yeah, just a follow up, that's been kind of an ongoing request and I'm glad you brought it up. But is that available to the public as well?
Yes.
Okay, so that is on our website. Okay, perfect, that is fantastic. Councilmember, Iserson?
All right, I was going to, to generate a request. Can we, just like all the other things here, can we add that to the end of our agenda or something? From the website, you go here for the folder too, like this is here instead of having to be part of knowledge and passed down. Like give you all links to all these presentations that we're giving, click it here, if you are, something like that is, now we all heard it. I'm not communicating, I just want to get me out here. I can add to the folder.
The only thing I caution on that is that if the location moves at some point, then all of our agendas will be completely outdated and sent to people in a long place. So I think with our new communications coordinator onboard, there can be a roadmap created to show where any text that tells people where to go. Since updating the website is a huge chunk of what he's going to be doing the next several months and making it easier to find information on the website. So that's definitely, you know, the website is several years out of date, so we haven't had anything to do it. And so making it easy to find documents and make sure all of the documents are up there that are supposed to be up there is for that as well. And I know that our clerk has worked on hard, I'm sure that happens as well.
I agree, for two weeks, I thought I sent him an email and said, where is it? Put a little more work in, you know.
Councilmember, Sappel?
On the Public Works position that we referenced there, I noticed on the record that the COVID vaccination is still under requirement. I'm wondering why that is with the state and the county and the federal government relaxing those requirements.
So it is on, that topic is on the planning calendar for June 6th. I have not had the opportunity to speak to the mayor about what that will look like. But the, that piece of business is coming together.
To, business to what? To do what?
It'll be under discussion.
Okay, the overview requirement?
It is on the.
Councilmember, Nathan?
Yeah, just super quick, sometimes when we finish projects, we'll have like a tour or an open house or ribbon cutting. Will there be anything for the police station? I know centers are private, so it might not be a public ribbon cutting where people can go in. But is there something planned maybe for council to get a tour of the project? Or? We have not planned that. Okay. I can speak to the chief about what might be available to council to plead. You know, we have the locker rooms changing in the booking area. I'm not entirely sure what parts can be accessed by the public, but I can talk to the chief and see what we might be able to do.
Council should be able to get a tour scheduled, but council has to escort him by, by the police department unless you have stages of approval.
Yeah, but I will speak to the chief about that.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for city administrator right now? Seeing none, we don't have any council committees, we have a ad hoc committee report system thing.
Councilmember, Nathan?
Yeah, I just wanted to report on what happened the last few weeks. So I attended E T P Inside Transportation Partnership and St. Paul Valley Mobility Coalition. And I did send an email out to let everyone know about the Metro changes, which were pretty significant. I, I mean, it doesn't sound like there's any consideration to change that. But I, I do hope that we can do some communication.
From city administration?
Yeah. Oh, no, and can you finish? I'll, I, when you're done, I have a response. No, if it's related to that, go ahead. So Metro is coming to a meeting on the 24th at Remlinger Farm. I met with Councilmember Perry, Sarah Perry, yesterday to talk about the service cuts. So there will be a presentation at four o'clock, I believe, on the 24th at Remlinger with Metro for us to learn more. And then once I, if there's any more to glean, I'll report back to council.
And I think an important clarification for council and public is that this is due to them not having enough people to run consistent routes. So this is not, does not impact the plan to increase service when transit comes aboard. This is expected to be temporary until they have enough drivers to cover the ships. Right now, they have routes in downtown Seattle that are highly used routes that are stranding dozens of people at a time. And that's not an acceptable service level for folks to not be able to get home. So this is temporary, this is not permanent. And as of this point, all of the existing service enhancements that are planned still remain. They're just trying to get out of the staffing challenges that they're having, that many agencies are having right now. So it will dissipate at the same time, we still don't have, my understanding is ridership as we did before. So routes, they look at the least utilized routes when determining when to cut. So that's really an important thing to keep in mind is they're working their tails off to provide service and bring what we need. And we just don't have the ridership, especially if I can actually across county line that's consistent.
Right, so once we know more, I think it goes into effect in September. So to be honest, the route impacted is one that's been routinely canceled. So I doubt there's very, very many people depending on it because it basically gets canceled every day. But just making sure there's some messaging, if there are some people still moving out.
Which, which one?
It's a 232, right? That's the one being canceled. And I get the updates and almost every day I get the update that it's being canceled. So instead of it being canceled every day, now it will just be.
Hold it, hold schedule.
I don't know, it seems like it's more the beginning and end of day, but I think that might actually be the only time that that will happen. So, yeah. The hope is next week when we have Metro, that they, they're supposed to offer some solutions. So whether that's vans or other options. My understanding is that the presentation at Remlinger is not going to be just a presentation of a kind of like service, but that they are going to come with some options. So I'm hoping that we get those options and then we can communicate out to the public what that's going to look like.
Councilmember, Shaver?
Well, I do, I do have mixed feelings about this. I know it provides some influence for many people, however, the times I paid for those bus routes. But my wife and I, now that's a small sample. But it does make one wonder how well utilized those bus routes are. And I suppose they have data on that. I mean, I kind of hope so, good, because, you know, it'd be useful to see, see that they have. Frankly, I was surprised that, you know, we were the only ones on the, on those particular routes. But on the other hand, like I said, I do understand it's very essential and needed by, by, you know, many, many people.
I had a couple of other items, do you want me to finish? So once again, the S B G A meeting is next week on May 24th, that's a Wednesday. And the deadline was 5:00 PM, but I heard back from Suzie at North Bend who arranges this. And she said, if you let her know by midnight tonight, you can still register and get your meal. You know, it looked really delicious. And it should be a fun meeting. And one thing that is, I plan to attend, one thing that they were asking and part of the agenda was that we bring examples of collaboration in public-private partnerships, any new ordinances, things we might want to share as a city with the neighboring organizations. And so I thought, if I end up being the only one there, or maybe someone else will be there. You will be there, okay. So I wasn't sure if we had plans to take a share. And then finally, I had spoken with a constituent about just public engagement. And this person brought up surveys, it'd be great if you did surveys. And I thought, oh, we can do surveys. And it turns out this person is not on social media. And so I think some people miss out on information from the city. And so I asked, I said, well, what is a method that would work for you? And he said, you know, email or text, like if people in the community could sign up to get an email or a text when things are going up on the web, on social media, it'd just be another route for people who are not on Facebook to get those kind of timely announcements. And I know we're just about to get a communication person, but I just wanted to make sure I brought that up and share.
City administrator, now?
Actually, very timely. So on our leadership team meeting today, our new community event coordinator is from Kimmor. And they have a website, they have a system that is run through six, we just haven't used it, where the community can sign up for how they want to receive information. And whether it's by email, by text, the library does something very similar so that constituents don't have to rely solely on social media, because a lot don't. So we are very blessed actually to have Rita, who's from Kimmor, because we can build up all the good stuff that Kimmor does and she's very familiar with that. So we're going to try to work in the next few months to activate that communication tool. Yeah, we were just talking about it today, she said, what are we using? And most of us said, we didn't know we had it.
And, and this is what happens when you get staff onboard to do the work. So thank you to council again for approving those concessions. Great. Anything else, Councilmember, Nathan? All right, so that was really ad hoc committee reports, but we'll just, I'm assuming there isn't any. So we'll just move into other council reports. Does anybody else have anything they would like to share or questions that they would like to ask of administration that was not related to the agenda?
Sorry, and there is, and I apologize if we talked about these last hours, I was absent. But I saw a response about the, you know, the muffler ones issue. And I think a posting by the police department was to remind folks, is there anything else planned on that? Or was there anything else discussed at last meeting as far as additional action?
I spoke to the chief and then chief is reaching out to his group to do some lessons learned from other jurisdictions who have tried to handle this issue. Kind of the beginning was to send the social media post by a reminder, the mufflers. He is meeting with the chief of Redmond as well. I can't remember what other jurisdiction he got ahold of who's recently done work on, you know, loud muffler notices. So he's going to find out what he can and see what other direction we can take.
Okay, during the discussion with those individuals, certainly they, I think there's other folks that have the same, similar concerns. We talked about the possibility of, you know, of a mobile noise monitor. If you will, at least recorded, like displayed them, not necessarily a ticking, but perhaps a friendly one, right? It's like your car has a TV and then, you know, a reminder that you can't, you know, have cars that have modified muffler systems, that type of thing may, may also be useful. I realize it's extra work, but hopefully not a lot.
We did discuss a mobile despoilment unit or some version of that, not easily achievable. Absolutely can't use it for the purposes of tickets or litigation, because it's not scientifically. There, there's not a machine that can be used for the purposes of the. But the chief, we did discuss that and the chief and Steve are having some conversation about whether or not that's doable. Where do we put it and where to move.
And noise ordinances in general are about as hard to enforce as firework ordinances. There's always questions, I dealt with this a lot in another professional role about noise. And you have to have machines calibrated correctly, they have to be placed correctly. There's lots of caveats that come into it that make enforcing noise ordinances almost impossible when it comes to the despoilment. So just to be very transparent about that, it's not something that is easy for any local government and law enforcement agency to actually enforce.
Yeah, which is, which is why I think, or one reason that, you know, hopefully the chief warrants some good, you know, information from his fellow, fellow chiefs in other municipalities. And like I said, I would like to consider, if not tickets, at least a unofficial warning maybe? Or a reminder that you can't have modified mufflers.
Hold on, I'm gonna get to the hair for time, she's had her hand up, I don't know how long you've had it up. So I'm here pretending, Henry, I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
It's not that long. Don't worry. I just had a couple of things. One is next week, Wednesday, May 24th. I know we also have our joint Planning Commission and Council meeting that night. But we have a council chat scheduled from 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM at CC's. And then I wanted to bring up A W C conference again. That's again, still coming up next month. I'm still trying to hammer out my schedule. I want to at least go for one day. They do, I, it sounds like they're filling up, so I just encourage other council members to really look at their schedules. They have their schedule posted, you can look at what works and what fits. And if you can just go for one day, I think it's worth it. It's one of my favorite conferences that I've ever been to and a lot of great information. And then lastly, just to follow up on an email I sent to all of you, you know, in speaking with our city administrator and her talking with our city attorney, that these council reports, as we've seen tonight, are really great ways to ask general questions that come up. I think we've sort of been using the good of the order at the COW, which I think is still technically fine. It's just a little challenging because we have an end time for our COW meetings. So I think, you know, in an effort to stay on task and get all of our agenda items accomplished in the COW meetings to maybe refocus on bringing those general questions that pop up when we talk to our community and as we're walking around town in our council reports. Traditionally, we always just use them to say, oh, I went to this meeting or to that meeting. But I think it's a really good use of these council reports still. So like we've done tonight, bring up things that we've just seen in our community. And that's all I have, thanks.
Yeah, I didn't even add, I was actually gonna add something to the topic that Councilmember Shaver brought up. So to circle back, I was gonna actually just say where, where, and I'm sure the police departments are looking at this. I was gonna say, you know, acknowledging your common's mirror on the noise, it is inherently difficult. Particularly when it's intentional versus unintentional and noise ordinances. We are, the summer months have, you know, happened and the weather gets nicer. Living up by the high school, you know, we do get the late night grand raising, which actually concerns me more of it from a public safety perspective, which is associated with noise. And I was just gonna highlight, that might be potentially something that, that could be enforced more in terms of, because it's a clear violation of local traffic laws versus a sound issue. So that might be a way potentially of addressing maybe some of the noise, because I know that's associated with the high speed vehicles.
Do we have a sense of roughly the time that happens that the letter sheet, you know?
I can. Yeah, I can kind of monitor it, it's not any given day, you know, obviously the weekend, but it's been a long stretch that I know. You know, Steve has also looked at it and this we thought about as we ultimately, you know, at some point make traffic modifications that we provide essentially for it. But yeah, definitely can, can apply some intention or jot things down, maybe determine the pattern. But we live, yeah, just adjacent to that, to the main road, so that's, that's what you do here.
Councilmember, Nathan? Yeah, you're right, it happens by Manhattan as well. I back up to that. So we definitely hear that.
It happens in my neighborhood as well. Yeah, in fact, it's delivery truck drivers that are the culprits, the money.
But thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other council reports? All right, we are moving along, so. All right, we are moving along. So we'll move on to our first item of unfinished business, the cable franchise agreement, agenda bill 23-31. Um, first off, I'll ask, is there any discussion? Councilwoman Shaker?
Um, again, I apologize. I know this was discussed last meeting, but I did read through the agreement, and I do have a few questions about that. Is that okay? One of the things I noticed, uh, would you agree with this? Actually, no mention of internet or broadband service, uh, in there. Uh, is that not in the plan?
So, um, under federal law, the city cannot regulate internet or broadband service. The only regulation we have is the ability to enter into cable franchise agreements. So in order for Comcast to provide internet, we have to approve a cable franchise agreement. Uh, we have absolutely no jurisdiction over internet.
Okay, but TV is mentioned in it. TV service is specifically mentioned, uh, in there. But, but maybe we can.
So I, I guess I'll just provide a couple of clarifications there. Um, the, this is just a cable franchise. Um, as you heard from our speaker, um, they're going to provide those other services. I won't commit. You can commit in a moment on later, but it's fine. Um, the city does have franchises that cover telecom services, uh, otherwise. Um, but they're coming in for a cable franchise, and then they can run those other services on those lines. And this franchise only covers the cable.
Okay, and why we mentioned TV service in there specifically and not everything?
The Cable Act. So, so we have a different set of authority stemming from the Cable Act. And so this, some franchise covers all of that, primarily because we get 5% gross cable revenues coming to the city for your general fund. Um, and so there's authority that is greater, I guess you could say, in many ways over the cable franchise. Okay, to your benefit.
Uh, the other thing, thank you. The, the other thing I didn't see in there was, uh, cost, uh, any kind of cost controls to our residents. And I was also a little confused about, I know there's competition, which is good. Um, but, uh, I was a bit confused about costs as, as, as well, the fact that we were set. I don't think any wording, uh, in the agreement.
Correct. The, the agreement doesn't cover what Comcast will charge to the residents for its services. It's just an agreement to permit Comcast to operate a cable franchise in the city of Seattle, or city of Newell. It's the permission. It's not the, uh, not the agreement between the customer and Comcast. It doesn't speak to that at all.
Okay, okay.
One thing, Mr. Kenny Crater, we've been wrong, but just like we use, we use, and, um, as Sam, we don't get to control customer rates. Of course, not something we legally have at the root.
Okay, okay. So it's the same. Okay, that's good to know, that's good to know. Um, and the cable, the current cable infrastructure, is it going to be shared? Or will it actually be a separate cable infrastructure between sound, uh, and coffers?
I think that would be a great question for Mr. Davis to answer.
It's separate. Uh, we, we put in our own, uh, supplier server network. So, um, it's kind of an open access network that, uh, that we provide. Um, ours is closed, uh, and that's, that basically what we have, uh, throughout all of our services. Uh, from Canadian border all the way out through Eugene and over in Spokane and plus.
Okay, okay. And my understanding then is we have no current infrastructure, Comcast infrastructure in Newell right now. Is that correct? So this would be new construction? Go, go, go.
Um, however, we do have conduit that, um, we can work with Comcast to create, that would be a separate agreement, whether or not we wanna lease or use our conduit for, um, the purposes of assisting Comcast to put in infrastructure. But we haven't discussed that arrangement yet, but after our very last.
Okay, Councilwoman Reser?
Yeah, and this is more sort of a comment, maybe a question, potentially addresses, I think, something that, um, you also brought up, in terms of, um, and, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think part of that is by not having one of these, we discussed last, the last session with about sort of the non-exclusive agreement. So inherent competition, you know, should provide some price control. I think the other, uh, from my perspective, you know, advantage in the city is specifically because there are not existing infrastructure. It's a new pipe, particularly pipe that's not sharing better with, with other services. So I think between those two, you mix of potential newer infrastructure and then some competition, there's an inherent benefit, but, but I think it's something in a free market, we're always gonna look at in terms of the cost benefit analysis, whether you're paying for it or, 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 you know, selecting that to deliver service. So I don't know if there's any, you know, that, I know that's sort of typically how the market runs, but, uh, yeah.
Yeah, I, I would say on, on cable specifically, when, uh, satellite, uh, the Dish TVs and the uh, the Dish networks exceeded over 15% of penetration across the, uh, video marketplace. That's where the SBT granted effective competition in the video marketplace doesn't exist. Um, and so that's where they made that it is an open marketplace, uh, very highly competitive marketplace, especially also with the open top providers, Netflix, uh, the, uh, those other world. So, uh, the consumers have a lot of choice for video. We compete, uh, heavily every single day. Um, but, you know, it, it is a very competitive marketplace.
And then Councilwoman Reser?
Oh, yeah, Mr. Davis, when you were speaking earlier, you mentioned your basic services, but then you were looking to advanced services? That would be provided on top of that? Are you, did you talk about that?
Yeah, I can, I talk about that really. Our TV services are charging cable. Um, and then it's internet. Uh, we also offer phone, uh, services, the digital, uh, phone products, uh, security. Um, and then we also provide, uh, commercial level services and residential. So, you know, we, uh, we would come in and not just focus on residential areas, but also, uh, offer our services to your commercial private third-class phone. Okay, I can answer your question.
Actually, the vote.
And one last question. So I understand we need to break down the degree to the city to reduce 5% revenue, so to speak, on the cable side of it, not the internet side, not bills versus, um, uh, it could just be an education, I don't understand what we need to, why do we have to franchise for someone else to come into the city and provide these services? Is it required? Or is it just the easiest way for company to be competitive in with someone else?
So, so the vast majority of the terms and conditions in that franchise are being documented in the franchise and agreed to in that document to make sure that things like relocation and insurance indemnification and whatnot are provided. So it's the best way to make sure that we're managing the city's rights away with these other entities that are in, in the right place.
Councilwoman Shaker?
Um, yeah, something John just said there, just to your question. So we, the city, do not get 5% of the service, service fees that only were the cable infrastructure? Is that correct?
Gross cable revenues.
Gross cable revenues, okay.
Only the.
But so that doesn't include your?
No, no.
Okay, or cable, or TV?
Nope.
Well, I'm sorry, TV, yes.
Unless it's, the TV is through the internet, which even more people have their TV through the internet.
Exactly.
So it's certification as the cable, it's just the cable that currently provides that, that service.
Is there any forecast above 5%? Maybe.
I think depends on who signs up for the city for cable TV.
You can look at our budget revenues for estimates on what our existing providers, um, turn over to us. Um, but there's really no, no way to estimate, I think, how.
Is it the same 5%? 5% of the cable?
Up and I'm not, or?
I don't, I don't know. I presume that's the yes. Okay.
Okay, okay, okay. And same in respect when Comcast or when, when STANL provides internet, we don't get a cut. So you don't get a cut with, with?
No, and, and that's, that's consistent for cities across the country. That's not specific to Newell. That is a federal, um, FCC decision, um, that we then.
Okay, what about services? We don't get any of that, huh?
No, please don't.
I actually don't know.
I don't believe we do.
They've stated. Uh, but since we lease the equipment, uh, not really. Uh, but television advertising, um, is a big chunk of the cable revenues. Uh, and so, but later on, I can, uh, I'll get here, uh, those revenues definitely, uh.
Okay, okay. Well, yeah, I, you know, obviously that depends on how competitive you are with various energy services. And, uh, so, you know, what, you know, how much television revenue that you have in Newell is, uh, could be seen, uh, in my, uh, my mind, especially with the, with the higher competitive, uh, internet TV providers out there right now. So I, I don't wanna, you know, make a wrong impression. I'm all in favor of competition. I think it will be healthy. Uh, I'm not, I'm not a huge fan of waivers down, like many people in town. So I think some competition will be, uh, be a positive, positive thing. And, and certainly, uh, certainly in favor of this. I, I just, like I say, just being, you know, seeing this for the first time, it just raises a few questions. So thank, thank you.
Um, Councilwoman Renatlin?
Yeah, I just wanna double check that I heard this right. So the 5% franchise fee, we don't know what we're charging wave or how that compares. Um, right now, I'm trying to find their agreement right now.
Okay, one of the, we actually keep an agreement, it's actually, um, out of compliance for several years. Okay, so whatever existed in the agreement before, the rules have changed. So the chances are that we, um, if I remember correctly, that we would not be able to recover the same amount in a bigger franchise agreement.
It's, it's 5%, and I'm almost certain.
Yeah, okay. Um, so then the other thing is, there is another source of revenue from cable, and that is, we have a utility tax, which is, I think, it's either eight or 10%. I saw somewhere recently that it was 8%, but I thought it was 10. But, um, but that is, it comes through like a utility tax, correct?
Yeah, I believe, uh, we will have to pass some ordinance to apply it to Comcast.
Oh, I thought it was just a category fee that it not, that it was.
If I remember correctly, several years ago, we actually had to, um, we were not charging it years ago for wave.
Right.
And the council decided not to charge it at that time because of the core service of wave. Um, and I believe, if I remember correctly, um, this would have been many years ago. So my memory could be false, could not be accurate on this, but eventually we did put it in place.
I believe we're receiving revenue now.
Yeah, um, so that'll be another action, um, to be able to put that utility tax on. So the council or something, you know.
Yeah, I know, it actually comes from this, it's like on your, it's built in, I don't know. Itemize it and some don't. Like we have utility taxes on our water sewer storm. We don't itemize it and disclose it to the customer that we're taking. I have another question, but go ahead, it's really.
Yeah, it was, uh, my last question, as we sort of danced around it, I just, I just wanted to come back. I fully understand how the agreement is structured and it is focused specifically on cable. I think you mentioned hybrid and also proprietary cable that you were running. I know one of the premier services or services you offer to other jurisdictions, this FiOS and some higher fee, which potentially can run underneath as well as screening services. Do you typically run that type of infrastructure at the same time, or is that, again, I'm not trying to push you in a box, but in terms of?
Yeah, the, the FiOS is specific to, um, that, that the remnants of.
Okay, but the fiber actually says.
Yeah, so we run a hybrid fiber coax, uh, so the vast majority of the distribution is, uh, it is fiber. So, you know, it is fiber-based.
Yeah, that's.
And then it's, you know, within the neighborhoods, um, depending upon, uh, the, the makeup, whether they're apartments, same family, uh, you know, how, how many stories of the single family. We will design, uh, the nodes, we'll put in a full visual node, um, you know, in our, our X1, uh, video product that is in the marketplace, uh, also allows those interactions with the, uh, with the old top. So, so it's an enabler of, of video, uh, but on the internet side, uh, what we deploy, this will be a, will be a year deployment. It's not gonna, uh, you know, happen overnight. We need to, uh, work with PSC on getting access to their poles, uh, under our agreement. But we'll be in definitely the two gig, uh, uh, levels. Um, and, uh, we may be, uh, closer to multiple gigs, seven or five, uh, depending upon how our technology, uh, uh, deploys, uh, or our 10G, uh, uh, that are currently working.
Yeah, I appreciate that. It's primarily, I can see residents here in Comcast is coming and then trying to, you know, associate that with the extended, your other services that you offer that, that helps, right? Thank you.
And Kennedy, this is our residential brand, Comcast benefits of the brand that you were seeing.
Thank you. Councilwoman Isaacson?
Um, hopefully he's, what, um, one timeline, any other timeline?
It, it's gonna be a year plus. I, I have an example where we built out the campus of the local shooting in reservation out by the way, or we have here. And that was, uh, I mean, they're gonna have to get through the permitting, PSC control of poles. And we have to make sure that the experience is, is proper and get through their process. There'll be a lot of underground construction with the neighborhoods that are existing underground, but we'll work through those. Um, and, and try and get through those, uh, as quickly as possible.
And if the business model fails, where we all gonna try to put a place, you all community.
There's a model, uh, fail.
Uh, you, I'm, I'm leaving all the infrastructure you put in this, this part of the city since it's a franchise.
There, there are provisions in the franchise, uh, for those that, uh, have the situation. I'd like to see them, uh, take place, uh, but there are provisions in there for, um, uh, in the event and, uh, transfers and, you know.
Um, Councilwoman Renatlin, and then to the administrator, yeah?
Yeah, so, um, just history of complaints. One of the issues is that when it switches from the cable to the node, the node needs electricity to then go further, the way the system currently is. And there's been a lot of frustration about when the power goes out, which it does here in Newell, that then internet and TV all goes down. And so I don't know if that's something, what areas you are involved in, but we do have power outages. And that has been, uh, a pretty frustrating situation for residents here in Newell.
Yeah, we, we work with, with power outages. I'm just like, there's a lot of trees, uh, uh, here on here. Uh, but, you know, we, we do work with a, a battery backup system for our power supplies. Uh, we monitor those. We have a tight relationship with, uh, PSC, PSC through their reverse the operations. So, uh, and, you know, since we have authorization, uh, they are the first responders. They control their lines and, and when we can access them, we are in repair. Uh, we have a very good track record around here of getting repairs back up and running, uh, very, very quickly.
Thank you. So you have a share right now?
Um, I was able to locate what I believe to be the last, or it's not a wave agreement, and it does list 5%.
Great, thanks. All right, um, now all the questions have been answered. Do we have a motion?
Yeah. Would the motion to a who? 23-31, and getting a contract with the city of Newell.
All of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All of us, please say no. Motion passes. Um, so that's 12 years of work in the making. For Mr. Davis, as I've been hearing me bug him at every city event for the last 12 years, when are we getting? When is Comcast gonna come to Newell? We really want you, we really need another choice. Uh, so, um, the time finally came, met their business needs. And so I think, uh, Mr. Davis and his team were, um, there were with our city administrator and city attorney, um, to get this through, and it will still be a while. But, um, our community has been asking for more choices for over 20 years, and now we have them. So, uh, that is coming, and it's a huge achievement for the city of Newell, and, um, thank you. Comcast for finding a cheaper Newell. All right, um, moving on to the other piece of unfinished business, amendment to ordinance number 1315, mobile food units, agenda bill 23-30. I know there are a couple of questions from, was, um, was this one your question? No, there was questions on the things. I know there are a couple of questions from which, um, was this one our question, no, there's questions on the concession policy. Um, does council want to discuss this further or do we have a motion?
I love it. Twenty-three, thirty-one, fourteen, thirteen, fifty, mobile two bits, seven.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And moving on to our final uh, piece of unfinished business, a concession policy for agenda bill twenty-three dash thirty-three. Uh, and we'll go ahead and start with the two questions, I believe we had a question from councilwoman Natalie and councilmember Isaacson.
I remember, my was a simple question, I thought to uh, uh, we're, we're about, um, it was more of a, cause he was probably the one who drafted it. Why, I would look at two, that why did we have a state administration, permit, one permit for the concession panel for a given day? You know, retire our hands, there's some reason why we did that. Um, I don't want to hold up Google a bit with that, if I'm bringing it up and let it move forward, that unless it doesn't improve today and then maybe come back in the future. Uh, I could have had valid reasons for doing that, to strike that out and let that work through, saying, you know, if you have two different events that they, a long period, just say only one event, just comes out and when they leave. And the other event can't, now there's been cleaning and turnover, it can happen, it's a bit, had a tired hands and order to sit there's a way. So allow two different events to have a concession, but now if I was working the second event, I'd go to the first event saying, hey, we're gonna need your permit to continue providing concessions for my event. That's a lot of money, nothing we can miss as well. But I just want to bring it up to city council's awareness, if you didn't catch that in your review, I'm gonna say a previous review.
So I think my, my only response is I don't see any reason why it can't be changed. I think it was intended to be a bit more confined at the start, I think there's um, uh cleanliness, organization and, you know, uh, processing issues with lots of people doing it in, in a day. Two, two in a day or more, more.
Yeah.
Um, I don't think I have anything to say you can't do that. Um, I think my recommendation, and I think you've already said this, it would be start here, see how it goes. Um, I would talk to director Lenachewski to make sure that the kind of uh, processing and oversight of more than one per day is feasible. Um, and I think there'll be lessons learned pretty quick on, you know, how it works. But if that's where the group wants to go, I, I personally don't have anything to say about it, I'll, you know, say administrator and, and uh, director Lenachewski may have thoughts on that.
Yeah, I would just like to make sure for Dujan, if we had this input and maybe to have, give him the ability to reject multiple permit requests because, and we've already approved all of the handles. And to me, it should be him, his staff, they should be the ones that should have the authority that are, or that are given to say, no, I can't give you five, you know, his staff. And, but he should also be able to say, well, I can give you two, it wasn't the ordinance fault that we do it, I would like to, but you can't.
Um, councilmember Shaper.
Yeah, I, I, you know, we discussed this previously, but I think one, one reason, John, is we really wanted to get our people, right? And to, to some extent, this is more the experiment, uh, I like the idea of, you know, kind of widening things up or widening the possibilities with two per day or whatever. Uh, I think that's a, I think that's a great idea, but I'm, I'm in favor right now, just getting some experiments uh with it. And seeing how we can, you know, adjust on, adjust it and then we go forward.
Yeah, and I was gonna just again, gonna add to that, I, I like the call walk run approach. I think the other piece was less around the permitting, issuing of the permits, it's more the interstitial uh inspection that have to take place, which would require city staff to sort of schedule those visits. And I think that adds some logistical overhead, so um, I, I again, find sort of starting small, see how it goes and then, you know, if there's any PM and. Obviously you can fit in a, a handoff and inspection, that would make sense, but we may not have those requests. And I think that's the one thing that what I'm trying to call up there is a second group, you know, we'll, we'll sort of see where those opportunities are and then go from there.
Great, councilmember Natalie.
Yeah, so I have a question, um, there wasn't a red line, so I was trying to figure out what changed since the last time we saw it. And it looks like there were, you know, quite a few minor changes, but the major change that stood out to me was the insurance requirement. And um, I just want to make sure that this is the most accessible and it doesn't feel overly difficult to rent the concession stand. And I don't really see that requirement in any of our other facility rentals, I mean, I don't know, I, people rent our buildings for lots of reasons. And I don't believe we require them to take out a special insurance policy for every rental. Is that something that we are doing new? I'm just trying to understand why this hurdle is especially being added to this.
I don't know the answer to that for your other ones, I'm always most comfortable if there's insurance provided by the renter, um. I have the unique ability to always punt it to the risk manager to make sure that they're, they've got it covered. So I would, I guess I don't know, I, this is definitely how I would want it to be done. WCIA has standard language for uh, insurance and indemnification provisions for all different types of agreements. And so the language, and I'm, I have a track changes, I can pull that up quickly on the screen, I don't think we need to go word by word through it, but if you wanted to visually see that, I could do that. The insurance indemnification section was entirely new for our conversation. And so the, the second two short paragraphs, just a few sentences, is from that WCIA manual. Um, and by going through WCIA, you get tulip insurance, which is just a very small, single day type policy. And that's taken from their facility use section, and so it's certainly their recommendation for that.
Um, so uh, Dr. Thompson and I have the benefit of doing our annual WCIA audit on Thursday. And we chose, every year you can kind of choose a different topic, we chose special events this year. Um, and uh, uh, we, we have a lot of work to do around special events and uh, facility rentals. Uh, based on the outcome of our audit, which is exactly what you want from an insurance audit. They help show you where you can do better. Um, so, given that WCIA was asking us on a special event side and on some of the um, whether it's parades, use of facilities for different types of events. They are pretty insistent that we have tulip insurance or some provision that uh, people can use our space, use our facilities, have insurance.
Um, and um, councilmember McHenry, how's her end up? So I want to make sure we get to her, I, we'll get back to the next one. You asked a question, yes, and let's let councilwoman McHenry go and then we can come back to the police.
Yeah, I was just gonna weigh in on the insurance and my experience is that the kinds of organizations that are gonna be renting concessions already have insurance. But you know, it's within these groups as well, it's pretty easy if they weren't one of the ones that already have something to cover that, to get the one day event coverage. I mean, it's, it's pretty basic um, amongst these groups and pretty easy to do. And I don't, I mean, I could be wrong, but in my experience, it hasn't been limiting for us to do, when I've been a part of other small nonprofit groups to um, to, to run our event and still make a good profit off of it.
I guess I would just say that, that's the whole purpose of that, that type of coverage is to make it simple and easy. And I'm sorry, I don't know if this was your error, fault.
That was gonna be my follow-up question, is it, the organization already had insurance that covers this type of a rental, that we won't make them also get a separate policy? That's what I wanted to.
So they're, yeah, if they're using the fields and they've already provided what would likely be more coverage.
Right.
That's going to be fine, um, there is a provision here at the end that talks about uh, that uh, other insurance in a form approved by the city. So if Steve has a regular field renter, um, and they can buy comprehensive coverage for the use of the facilities and that is sufficient to also include, and it may or may not be, I don't think that.
That's a check.
Yeah, I think we, we can quickly and easily check with the risk managers, if that should.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
Motion approved, two more, or excuse me, the concession policy in twenty-three dash thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
I have thirty-two minutes.
Second.
Twenty-three, thirty.
Thirty-two.
Twenty-three, thirty.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those.
Sorry, uh, all those, those please say no. Motion passes, and with that, um, if there are lesser objections, we are adjourned. Eight forty-one PM.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.